Good evening, everyone, and welcome. And welcome to the Seneca County Board of Supervisors regular June meeting. Margaret, roll call, please.
Supervisor Reynolds.
Here.
Supervisor Garlic Lawrence Dadd.
Here.
Supervisor Brownell.
Here.
Supervisor Davidson.
Here.
Supervisor Proudy.
Here.
Supervisor Kaiser.
Present.
Supervisor Lazaro.
Present.
Supervisor Cronomatter.
Here.
Supervisor Watt.
Here.
Supervisor McGreevy.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen.
Present.
Supervisor Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Shipley.
Here.
Supervisor Habedal.
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business tonight is the quarterly report from our TPA, the Seneca County Chamber of Commerce. Jeff and Rick, good morning, guys.
Good morning. Good morning. Good evening, gentlemen. Depends on where you are. I think it's morning sometime in Singapore. Well, hello. We do have a little presentation in store for you tonight as well. But before that, I just wanted to introduce myself, Jeff Shipley. I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce, which is the county's tourism promotion agency. I have with me Rick Newman, who is our destination marketing manager. He handles tourism on a day-to-day basis. So the two of us are going to go through, in brief fashion, the report that all of you have received. It's on your desk. It's that color sheet, two-page report. I'll walk you through, as I always do. This is the first quarter and second quarter report. We're combining the two tonight. As you all, most of you are aware, we come before this board on a quarterly basis to talk about the tourism program, how we're spending the money, and some of the initiatives that we have going on. So that's what I'm here to do. I'll start with the front page of that report, which has an executive summary on that first column. I'm very proud, we're very proud of the growth in the local tourism industry over the past several years. As indicated in your report, and I think it's important to point out to you, Seneca County is just one of six counties in the region that can say they've had positive visitor spending growth every year since 2012. That is really remarkable, particularly since some of the larger communities, larger counties, can't say the same. So we're very proud of that fact. Most of the stats, I will just also preface this by saying, most of the stats are from 2016, is the last year that we have. They routinely get updated by the state, but they have not been since the end of 2016. So we're still waiting on the 17 numbers. For your reasons, purposes, that does not include the impact that Del Lago Resort and Casino has had. So that, keep that in mind, because that's a very big number. So, the rest of that executive summary, tourism is a very important industry to New York State, as you have in front of you. It's a $65 billion industry in the state. It makes it one of the state's largest economic engines. Also noted in your report is the fact that the Finger Lakes region accounts for the second largest amount of visitor spending in the state, when you take out New York City and Long Island. Finger Lakes is a very, very important tourism area for the state of New York, and Seneca County is a very important area for tourism, as all of you well know. It's a vitally important industry to our community, to economic development efforts. It accounts for more than $60 million in direct spending in this community, and with Del Lago, nearly 2,500 jobs. So, very significant statistics for you on tourism's impact in this community. The budget, moving down to the budget, you have our full and complete numbers accounting on that report. As you can see, that budget consists of funding from the state matching funds program, it's a state grant, of which the county matches that amount. This year it was $65,000 and change. We do not have that money. We just got it tonight, actually. John, County Manager John Shepherd gave it to me tonight. So we do have that money. That will be added. But the rest of that funds that we've received to date is part of the tourism contract that we have with the county. So you can see the expenditures related to the monies that we have taken into the, to date. Our expenses through June represents a very fiscally responsible budget that places a premium on maximizing our return on investment. I just wanted to highlight a couple of the major program funding areas this year. First and foremost, the production of our annual county visitor guide, which all of you have on your desk as well, it was on your play setting. Distribution outlets, for getting that guide into the hands of the people that want it, our visitors. Advertising, both print and digital, maintaining our county information centers, the innovative use of technology, which you will have a quick demonstration, presentation following this, and a major update to our county's travel website. Those are all the major program areas that we're spending the county occupancy tax dollars on. Also, with respect to the occupancy tax, you have a chart at the very bottom of that report that shows that the proceeds from the occupancy tax fund have been steadily increasing over the past few years, and we certainly expect that trend to continue, obviously, with the addition of Del Lago Casino. And I'm just going to briefly go over on the backside of your report, go through some of the visitor tracking. Our office tracks visitors as much as we can. We track as much data as we can. It helps us with our marketing efforts and putting the dollars where they make the most impact. And so, the visitor origin, in terms of where visitors to Seneca County are coming from, probably no surprise to most of you, but the majority come from other parts of New York State, within the drive radius of us, so within a five, three to five hour radius for the most part. And there was one on there, as you can see, Russia. Russia accounted for a sizable faction of visitors to Seneca County. That was actually in April. They're either getting an early start on the election cycle, or they were actually coming from, it was a motor coach tour that detoured into Seneca County from New York City on its way to Niagara Falls. So they detoured Seneca County and went to the outlet mall. So it was a pretty, as you can see, I mean, it accounted for a pretty significant portion of traffic this quarter, but that was back in April. The reason for the visit, the most popular reasons for the visit during these two quarters were shopping, food and dining, and the casino. And keep in mind, this quarter, for the most part, quarter one was in the winter months, and we tend to see a reduction in wine traffic in the winter months. I would expect, based on historical data, that we're going to see the wine industry be added to that major category for most popular reason for their visit. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rick to finish up the report, and then we're going to take a brief tour of a new technology that we're working on.
Good evening, or good morning, whatever you prefer. As Jeff mentioned, I'm the destination marketing manager for the Seneca County Chamber of Commerce, Rick Newman. Thank you for allowing us to come before you tonight. I wanted to start at the front of the report that we gave you. As you can see, on the right-hand side, we have our notable promotional campaigns that we run every year. You can see that we place ads in traditional print materials, which are listed right there, but we also use multiple digital opportunities to better target a particular market to help our advertising. Of these means of advertising, we present two pretty common themes to them. One is positioning ourselves as the gateway to the Finger Lakes, especially with the addition of Del Lago coming to the northern portion of the thruway exit 41, northern gateway into the rest of the Finger Lakes, where we can then disperse our visitors to everything else that we have to offer. And second theme that we carry throughout our promotional campaigns is conveying experiences unique to Seneca County. For example, the travel guide in front of you, the faces and stories of the tourism professionals and all of the unique properties that we have to offer here is really a big theme for us. We also choose niche marketing to, again, target specific markets, such as, you can see, the campground owners of New York. We place an advertisement both digitally and print with them, but we also travel into niche markets, such as the Haunted History Trail of New York State, which has just increased tremendously over the past couple of years since its creation, and other niche markets, such as bird watching or outdoor recreational cycling niches of that sort. If we move to the back, I want to finish the rest of the report for you. We'll start with the public relations and earned media impressions. I just want to say that earned media impressions has a price tag larger than what pretty much everyone's budget cannot withstand to do on their own. We work with a regional public relations firm through the Finger Lakes Regional Tourism Council, which I'm a sitting board member on the organization, where we work with our public relations firm to pitch story ideas to these large media publications. And as you can see, under the PR efforts, these are just a few of the ones that we have had properties listed in. There are many, many more. We've actually, last year, produced over $3 billion impressions in terms of earned media. And you can see, you know, certainly, celebrating women's history, especially March being Women's History Month, that was a very big month for us, and also a very big pitching effort for us throughout the entire year, as a matter of fact, but certainly that was a big target for the month of March. Craft beverage industry, obviously a big portion of why visitors come to visit our particular area. You can see the Finger Lakes Cider House down at Inner Lake in New York, beautiful property, just placed in there for USA Today. And again, another reason why a lot of visitors come is the rich history that we have. Obviously, you know, the Women's History is located in there, but you also have the other museums, Wonderful Life, Waterways and Industry, and the Historical Society. Moving down to the major initiatives and event collaboration and attraction, Empire Prime Days, obviously it's going to be here before we know it, so we are actually partnering with the show management again this year to coordinate the vendor appreciation reception. Received very well last year, so we hope to see that grow at least double this year. For those of you who don't know, it is the largest outdoor agricultural trade show in the Northeast, so we're looking forward to that. The Corning Museum of Glass Lodge, they were here last year during Canal Pass in Seneca Falls. We convinced them to come back again on their statewide tour, so they're making a future stop again this Labor Day weekend this year, so we're looking forward to that as well. And something new that we're doing for the first time is partnering with Fishing League Worldwide to host a college bass fishing tournament, which we are collaborating with that organization to help bring an estimated 150 anglers with their families, friends, and college support teams to the community for a fishing tournament later in July. And then moving down to the major initiatives and visitor resources, again, we've touched on it a couple of times, but that magazine right in front of you, the official county travel guide, we've got a new cover, new imagery, property content, and map additions. One of the, you know, the biggest things with that, that we contracted, you saw in the budget since the beginning of the year, is that we distribute approximately 110,000 copies of those travel guides to various contracted vendors throughout the Northeast and the Mid-Atlantic. And one of the biggest things that we are very proud to mention as of this year with this new guide is that we are working with the Quality Inn, the Hampton Inn, multiple bed and breakfasts, to have these guides in every single room for the visitor staying overnight to use as a resource. We are encouraging them to take those copies and bring them back with them, so they know what they can experience when they come here next time. And the website redevelopment that we spoke about earlier is the top priority, top program priority for 2018, as identified by the tourism committee at the Chamber of Commerce, the Seneca County Advisory Committee on Tourism, which is the county tourism advisory committee, and is follows in our TPA marketing plan. With that, the other initiative we have for you on the report is a visitor kiosk, which we will now go ahead and give you a demonstration for. And I'll have Jeff on the mic while I'm navigating through the software.
So, you need to use the screen? While they're getting that set up, can I answer any questions? Does anyone have any questions about the report, any of the information that you heard? Yes, sir.
Did you drop Andy's off at Trader Billy's?
We did, actually. Yes, we did. One case or two, Rick did that not too long ago, so yes, they have that. I understand that they've been in front of this board a couple of times, so yes, we did receive the information and dropped it off.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It wasn't Trader Billy's, it was somebody that runs the state.
Correct. Yes, absolutely correct. It's an antique store, I believe.
Antique shop.
Yes.
Jeff, I have a quick question. The governor was here in the Finger Lakes two weeks ago to open his new visitor center in Geneva.
We were there.
Is that new visitor center in Geneva getting interfaced with any of the Chamber of Commerce, or how is that going to help expand tourism visitation to our town?
So, the visitor center, kind of teed me up on that one. The visitor center in Geneva is the New York State Welcome Center that they have launched. It's a very nice facility, the best that $10 million can buy, I think, today. We went, Rick and I were part of the opening of that facility. I will say this, Governor Cuomo has certainly put a lot of investment into tourism over his administration, and we are very happy at a lot of the initiatives that he has installed. This particular initiative, the welcome centers, it's not just the one in the Finger Lakes, it's the one in all, there's one in every region of the economic development zones. We would certainly like to see, like to be able to say that there is a lot of representation for Seneca County, and for that matter, any county in the Finger Lakes region, it's just not the case. The policy of those welcome centers is such that they are not accepting any brochures of any kind. So, that visitor guide, along with any other county visitor guide, is not part, you will not find that in those welcome centers. What you will find is electronic kiosks, similar to what we're about to show you. However, we feel our kiosk is a little bit more user-friendly for the visitor, because it relies on a map and map technology. Theirs is more of an app, and you can download this app off of the App Store and anywhere else you get an app these days. It's the I Love New York app. Their kiosks are pretty much operating on those apps, so you have to know where you are, what you're looking for, what the name of the place is that you're looking for in order to really effectively use that. So, I hope, I'm hopeful, we are certainly working with our regional partners, our regional council, to suggest changes that make those welcome centers more user-friendly for the visitors and help disperse that traffic throughout the region, especially to Seneca County. It's so new that we don't have a whole lot of data on the traffic coming to those visitor centers, but I think it's a work in progress. Stay tuned. You know, certainly, it has not included some of the things that we would have liked to have seen, nor are we certainly enthused that the New York Kitchen is really the ones that are running that facility, because I don't know how much knowledge they have of Seneca County. So, that's something, for example, that we've worked through our regional partners to suggest to the state that we be involved, the TPAs be involved in the education process that goes along with the volunteers that staff those centers.
Excuse me, I wouldn't have to say that I was present at that welcoming, and there is Tommy Murray's Miranda Cheese was there in one of the coolers, and there was also Cubicle Lake Creamberry Ice Cream. So they are trying to incorporate some of Seneca County.
Well, that's good news.
Yep, they were right there.
And Rick, a follow-up question. You mentioned the travel guide is in a few of the local hotels, they put it in the rooms. What about Del Lago, the hotel at Del Lago?
We are beginning talks with them to have them join that collaboration.
Correct.
Community, you know, to get the word out, but we are having talks with them, so we're trying to get the kiosk taken care of right now, get that all situated, and then that will be next on the deck.
Do they just have one kiosk out there?
Correct.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move to the, Margaret, roll up the screen now. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to walk you through, we're really excited to give you a quick demonstration of this technology. We're really excited about it. We've been developing it for the better part of a year now, working, this started, as you heard, with a partnership with Del Lago to create really an interactive tourism experience, a kiosk for use at the casino to direct guests to other tourism properties throughout the community. So we have since added on to that scope beyond Del Lago, and really are in the final stages of adapting this technology for use with tablets. And so what you see Rick on right now is an iPad, and our hope is to have several of these iPads deployed throughout the community, throughout Seneca County, as a way of having a mobile visitor information center. So this is a way that we can take it and adapt that technology, take it to other properties in our tourism community that are in maybe some remote locations, and they can serve as a de facto tourism information center, all they need is Wi-Fi connection. So, the first thing that we're going to show you is when the, when you first launch the kiosk, it incorporates some basic visitor tracking to help us refine our marketing targets. So you can see, it's a tab here to start, and it asks for a ZIP code. And so as Rick enters in the ZIP code, it's a way for us to figure out where people are coming from. You saw some of the stats earlier. Once they get into it, there's some other tracking features throughout the site. Basically, every page is tracked, every property that's clicked on is tracked, so we know where they're going, what interests they have. And then beyond that, we're also tracking emails, because there's a feature, as you'll see later on, that allows people to send directions to a property right to their phone or mobile device or email address. And so, we're able to build a database from likely repeat visitors to our community. So as I mentioned, this whole platform is based off of Google Maps. That's really probably the foremost map technology that everyone is familiar with probably the most. So it operates much similar to a kiosk at a mall, so where are, you know, you are here type of technology. So this one is showing you at Del Lago Casino is up on the screen to show you that's where you are. Every property that is highlighted that comes up will produce a pin, a locator pin on this. So I'm going to ask Rick to go in and select a category. Really, you have categories down the right side. The basic premise is users would select a category that interests them, agritourism, craft beverage, food and dining, history, so forth, on the right side. I'm going to ask Rick to go ahead and select agritourism, which is among the fastest-growing niche sectors in the Seneca County tourism community, and then go ahead and click on Miranda Cheese, for example. I heard that one earlier. So Miranda Cheese comes up, you see all the other ones go away, and you see exactly where Miranda Cheese is located with that bouncing pin right there to show you it's just outside of, just off of 96. And now you have an option to either click on that pin, or Rick, go ahead and click on the details. There's a red detail button. Up pops some more information about Miranda Cheese. It gives you their address, it gives you their phone number, it gives you a description on Miranda Cheese. It's populated with whatever photos or images that we have in there. And at the very bottom, it's cutting off a little bit on the screen, there's send me directions, and that's what I was talking about. If the user clicks on send me directions, up will pop a screen that asks for your email address, you type in your email address, and you will receive a prompt reply that gives you detailed directions to that particular property. So that is basically how this works. There's also a rating system, you can see the stars, those are users that have entered in, similar to an Amazon review or a Yelp review. It's just sort of a way to get people's interaction going on this site. So that's how it goes, that's basically the premise of how it works. Rick, why don't we go ahead and navigate to another one, how about the Seneca White Deer at the wildlife facility? So Rick's going to go back, select another category, click on wildlife, you see the Seneca White Deer bouncing pin to show you where the white deer are located, up pops this description box with description, the pictures that we have, and then the send me directions. So it's all meant to focus the user on accessible, identifiable place near where they are in some cases, or where they're going to be, so they can plan out their trip. And you can pick multiple ones and send multiple directions if you wanted to do that as well. Has every category that is covered in our tourism mix. The last thing that I'm going to ask Rick to do is the kiosk also allows you, if you didn't want that, and you wanted a little bit more down and dirty information, you wanted to access our travel guide, our travel guide is on there as well. And so Rick just clicked on the last one, it brings up a screen, although I think the screen is going to cut off where Rick is going to go. Under the bottom is the pages, the page content. You'd see this on the screen if you were actually on the kiosk. But all of our travel guide in its entire electronic form is also on that particular platform, so users have multiple areas, ways to access information. There is a very comprehensive list up there, as you can see, all of our, all of our properties are added into the system. The property owners themselves have the ability to update that information right now, they can log into our system at the chamber and update their complete description, they can give us ours, whatever they want to put up there, they can update. And that's how, we have to physically input it right now, but once our new website technology is up and running, it will be real time that the property owners can input their own information. So, that was a really quick down and dirty example of what we've been working on, the kiosk technology. This has been featured at the regional level. Multiple counties are looking at the same technology that we have right now. We're the first, and we're very happy to be the first. We think there's a lot of potential in this technology, and certainly, as we're seeing with more and more places getting away from a printed brochure, I will tell you, that comes with a caveat, because this area, particularly this area, still gravitates towards printed materials. And we don't see that going away anytime in the near future, but we will probably be putting more of an emphasis on digital as we move into the future. But that, that being the case, we really think this makes access to information much more feasible, and hopefully, the more we can continue to make this information accessible, the more we can grow the important industry. Does anyone have any questions from me or Rick on this technology?
This is a TPA funded?
It's TPA funded, correct.
Anybody in the county can go on and get on the app?
Tourism property.
Like Trader Billy's, are they on that?
Craft beverage.
I was there last night, Saturday afternoon, but he said he's not a member of the chamber, so my question now is, how would he get on?
There's a lot of members that, there's a lot of properties out there that are not members of the Chamber of Commerce. You don't have to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce, just like you don't have to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce for our publication or our website. This isn't complete, we haven't launched this yet, so I don't know if they're there. Rick, did you find them by any chance there?
No, but we're still updating it.
Yeah, we're still updating. But you can see the database that we have. I can assure you, those are not all Chamber members. I have a lot bigger salary for all of those businesses we're changing members. We have a lot more money for Chamber. Any other questions? Yes?
This is probably a stupid question, but the map itself, only Route 96 is highlighted. How come 414, 96A, 89, it looks almost like if you were walking in Glen?
So if you zoom in, those roads will come in. It's the Google Map technology. It's basically, if you pull up your smartphone and go to a Google Map, it's the same map. The more you scroll out, the fewer roads come.
Yeah, unfortunately we don't control the road.
But if you were to scroll, if you were to just scroll, 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 you're going to get those roads, those secondary roads will be on that, for sure. get those roads, those secondary roads will be on that, for sure.
I have a question. So, tourism budget, salaries and benefits, am I reading this wrong, it's only $66,821? I know you guys have like four people on staff?
We have five, actually.
Five.
And we all split, four out of five split that money. So, we're about 46% salaries, benefits, in terms of what we bring in, which is a really healthy ratio when it comes to a...
So, four people split $66,000?
That's year-to-date supervisor. But yes, that's correct.
Okay, just through the year.
Half a year.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other question?
Nice job.
Thank you. Cemetery Association. Don, good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Chairman Shipley, Manager of the Church, and our relief of making this appointment, and addressing, I'd like to thank the board itself. Basically, I've been on, a lot of yous know me, I've been around here for about 10, 12 years, from the beginning of, of working on Sampson, with Zolio, and I lived up in this place for many years. Anyhow, my concern is, things already get done out there, and there's money that may disappear. I was talking to Senator Helmy, and she said, the way things are going right now, money that's available to Sampson, if they lose the majority in November, that this money will disappear. Right now, we got $900,000 that we can use on almost anything in general at the cemetery. And we got $2 million to be used at the firehouse, which is the fall season, the terminus center. And not just being used for storage right now, you can't even walk in it. It has bathrooms, and not too much else. Oh, Skip, Skip is Vice President, he worked, did some work in that building. And basically, what we're looking at is to get something going. It has to be done right now. If we don't get things going, the money's gonna disappear, and it's gonna be wasted, and propensity to see together. So, what I, like, I just wanna, I'll read what you've got in front of you, basically. Memorial, no improvements have been made to the all-season terminus center, also known as firehouse. Original plans call for the completion of the exterior and interior of the building. Since then, the exterior was refurbished in a respectable measure. Interior was cleaned up, walls removed, to install the restrooms. No attempt to completing internal memorial service area as been made. Original plan called for seven stained glass windows that would represent the five branches of the armed forces, plus World War II merchant marine. And these six would be installed in the rear windows. The seventh would be the current Sampson Memorial. This is, I mentioned, this is what, rendered us, what we had proposed, and you all have that in front of you. It's got the seal of Senator, nothing else, so you know it's an official document. What I'd like to mention is, we, the association, we're authorized to do fundraisers for different projects on the cemetery, and one of the projects we had was the stained glass windows. As it turns out, we've got probably close to two-thirds of what we need to pay for, but we were told if the program goes ahead with the $2 million, they can use that to put the stained glass windows in. The money that we've, you know, approved, we can use it for something else, but we'd like to ensure that those stained glass windows in. We collected money, the people have donated, we're assured that there's a plaque that's going up on the wall with different people's donation and who it's dedicated to, and those flags have to be put up in that firehouse. But till all that's done, then we can decide what we wanna do with the money that was intended for stained glass windows. And other than that, we had to, as you can see in the proposal, it says for many years, bad money had been available, donated to the all-season terminus center, but nothing has been done. A present $2 million is available, and $900,000 is available for the cemetery in general. And basically, we'd like to see that happen, and it's gotta be done very shortly, otherwise, if we don't get it started, the money needs to be, you know, designated for before November. And we'd like, I don't know what we can do about getting a group together, a planning board, or whatever. I'm willing to be involved with anything these guys wanna do, but we gotta get this done. The other thing is, we're looking to get this thing, I gave Chairman Shipley some of the documents that I collected through the years about Zolio, and then some of the other, I think it was, a couple of Assembly bills and a couple of Senate bills that are in Albany that address the cemetery, trying to make it a state cemetery. As it stands right now, there's a little-known item on the state income tax that if you click it, you can donate to veterans funding. It doesn't say nothing about the cemetery, but it's intended, that money's intended for the cemetery. And right now, Senator Zolio, at the time, told us we're gonna need $6 million in order to set up a fund, draw from the interest and everything else to keep it going. Right now, I think it's about three or four years of being on the income tax, I think we collected less, around somewhere around a million. At this rate, it's gonna take another 10 years, you know, so. I spoke to Senator Funky several weeks ago, at one of our conventions, and also Mark Johns, who's Assemblyman. And basically, what Senator Funky said, how much money do you need? And I said, I was talking to the chairman before, and he said it costs us about $100,000 a year to maintain that with salaries and everything. I said, that should be peanuts for the state. I mean, they put $10 million into this thing on a throwaway, and signs that they might have to take that. You know, if you think they could come up with a couple hundred thousand dollars to pay for the cemetery. As your remarks, you're, I think you're almost correct on the amount of state-run cemeteries in the United States. About 50 states, there's five that do not have state cemeteries, and we could all use to look, one of the larger ones that doesn't have it. There's seven total with the, some of the protective areas, the islands along and stuff like that, a lot of those places have them, and they're not V.A. cemeteries. But it's shameful that New York State, with all the resources we have, we can't get a veteran cemetery. And it's built right now, and we just, I don't know, I'm sick, I've heard some people saying that we should all build it up in public. I gave the chairman a document saying that this is intended to be a veteran cemetery, and not to be used for anything other veterans of it, according to the V.A., with diabolists. V.A. diabolists have a veteran armed discharge, and spouse, and under certain circumstances, children who are dependents. But other than that, they're the only ones that should be built there, buried there. I, when I took on the, yeah, this project, I was asked by Senator Zolio to, you know, commit to be buried there, and I am, gonna be buried there. And I want it to be a cemetery, a veteran cemetery, I want this firehouse finished. And I can, any questions?
Anybody, Supervisor Lawrence?
Yes, I don't know who to direct it to, but if there's been grants that are available and nobody's assisted them to write grants, how can the county step in with that? If it has to be completed before November? When does the county take over responsibility also?
Johnny, why not, real estate?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county owns the land, right? The IDA is supplementing the operations to a little over $100,000 a year. Two million grants have been applied for, and in the process of receiving toward the refurbishment of both the brig for storage and also the terminus center. And then, $900,000, again, is a SAM grant too, that has not been definitively defined at where that $900,000 is going to go.
But the grants have been, the applications have been done, have been completed?
For two million. The application's not completed, the $900,000.
What was that again?
So, I can, I can...
Tracker, Henry can probably...
Okay, the $2 million grant, we have received the contract last month from the state. So, we are in a contract stage, and so, we are now ready to proceed with reaching out to the architect and starting that process to go again. So, and there was a $200,000 grant from Palmasano, which you remember that we were gonna renovate the brig, and we got jammed up with MWBE goals. We could not meet those goals, so we are at the point where we are now going to build a new maintenance or storage structure there, but we're currently waiting for the state to let us know that they have re-appropriated those funds, because if not, they were going to expire at the end of July, so we need, once we know they've been re-appropriated, we have the extension paperwork already to submit. So, we're waiting for Department of State on that. We have the $2 million grant. We are waiting to decide whether or not, what to do with the $900,000, which Phil Yale came two weeks ago and talked about some ideas to do with the $900,000 grant application. So, we have that, and my understanding is that that money will be there, but we need to decide what we're gonna use it for.
With the $900,000?
With the $900,000.
So, sir, my question then to you is, he came to the board and thought of a crematorium.
Yes.
Unless I'm reading this wrong, you don't feel that's a good option?
Well, to me, is adequate the amount of crematoriums in the area between Syracuse and Rochester, I don't know the number of them, but it seems to be adequate for what the need is. To take this, and if they wanna put a crematorium there, I really don't have a problem, but the intent is to make it open to the public.
I don't think he...
Well, that's, I think down the road, he wants to open this up to the public.
Crematoriums.
The crematorium could be used...
Not to be buried there, right.
To be counted something.
Right, exactly. He specifically said that, that it would just be for veterans.
Yeah.
Crematorium, yes, you could cremate anybody's body there, maybe some money on.
I wasn't here for that meeting, but what I, what I heard was that he would eventually like opening up to the public to fund it, so that's what I heard.
Just to be cremated, not to be buried there.
Okay, well, that I didn't know, so.
Yeah, that's the way he approached this board, trying to make, trying to make the cemetery a little more sustainable.
Yeah, well, that I can see that. I have no problem with a crematorium, I just, I have a problem opening to the public, anything that's...
The cemetery?
Yes.
Not the crematorium?
Right, the crematorium, they could use it for making money on the outside, but as long as they don't start allowing those burials of non-veterans to their families, that would irritate me.
Joe, I have one quick question for you. The $2 million that's been secured, is that actual grant money, or is that money the county has to spend and then submit for reimbursement?
Yes, reimbursement.
So, it's not actually money in our hands?
No.
It's just a piece of paper saying that you spend the money and we'll reimburse you?
That's how we build the cemetery with grant money like that. You had, the county actually had to fund it?
Some $1 million in dormitory grants.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Supervisor Cromwell?
Maybe Joe can answer. I'm just wondering who the entity is that's gonna put the RFPs out for this work? Is that the county, or is that the Cemetery Association? Who's in charge of getting all the rules?
Historically, it's the county. In the past, it's been the planning office that has been doing that, and now with Sam Crane here, we'd probably be, we're getting a conjunction or something like that.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Supervisor, I say.
So, since we have the money, Mr. Shepherd, when are we gonna get started?
Seems like time is over.
Right now, everything's...
Just now, we have the $2 million contract.
The $2 million contract just came last month, so...
So, the next phase is the RFP for the design and engineering construction?
We would start pulling together where we stand on past designs. We've reached out to Thailand, who we've used before, so, and you can see some of the design work had previously been done, so we need to get moving, revamping that and seeing what the cost figures are there, and moving forward.
I think that's a good move right there. I think any help that Senator Longley might be able to give us, she probably, I don't know if you need any guidance, you guys have been doing this for years, so. But the other thing is, down the road, if we find the funding and maintaining the offices in Seneca County, I would love to see this thing become a state cemetery, and we need to work on that. And if not, all right, let it, trump it, see. We got, it's a no-brainer, you got 162 acres of a veteran cemetery that's made through the order of the V.A., and nobody wants it? Come on. There you go.
Is there any other questions from the board? Okay, Dan, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Keep in touch.
I, you keep in touch? Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna drop this, you know, and I think it'd be a very...
Neither do we.
Skip, do you have anything to say?
No. You did your job.
Thank you, Dan.
Skip is one of the real values of the program, and I'd like to acknowledge it for that. Feel awful about that.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you too, Dan.
Okay, our next presenter is Robert Vernon. Robert, good evening.
All right. Tell me the board to dive, because I became, with custody of two little girls that are nine and 10 years old, both have IEPs, they've been sexually abused. There's no help in Seneca County for any child that has a disability, that has any problems at all. I get told by Love House, by GAAP, by Seneca County Council, there's no funding. You know, no funding. What am I supposed to do with two children that are nine and 10 years old? I have guardianship law, and they look at me and they say, you see, what are we gonna do now, Rodney? We have nowhere to go, we have nobody to help us. You got Seneca County Council talking to them, telling them everything will be okay, everything's all right. You got the GAAP program down in St. Falls, it took my 17-year-old son that was not on probation or pins, had a young man come in the house and take him off for two or three days out of the week, telling me, they're not on parents, we can't help you. or three days out of the week, telling me, they're not on parents, we can't help you. Taken down to the council building, they taught the hand down there, and they say, well, the only thing you can do is come from and give them love. I'm from the south, can't tell by my voice, I'm from Virginia. We had all the help we can get from the community. I lived in Binghamton, New York, had all the help in the world you can get from Brooklyn County to help these children. I live in Seneca County now, no help at all from no one. They go to Bloomville two months ago for the Special Olympics, I don't see anyone around here, didn't notice any faces there, did support Special Olympics in Seneca County. I got one that goes to Kelly School in Newark, because she has an IEP type statement, she has ADHD. I have one that goes to Lafayette School over here, that's in a special needs class on fifteen-one-one, and they're both scared of human beings, because they've been abused all their lives. I step up to the plate, because their grandmother died of cancer because she got tired of fighting. And I look at them and I say, it's going to be okay, I'm going to fight for you until the end. No one's going to help. Ask for help, no one helps. So I'll sit here today, I'm asking for help, that's all I'm asking. Give me some kind of program to help these children grow up to have a good life, to not be scared of you, you, anyone in this room. They can come to you and say, excuse me, man, can you help me down the streets? Sure, I'll help you, instead of run away from you. Because that's what they did to the doctors the other day when she had a problem, did one to Doctor McCutcheon, because she was scared. So I'm asking for help, not only for my two children, but for anybody else that's got children with special needs. That's what I'm asking for. I get told no funding, Seneca County has no funding for children with special needs. I talked to Stacy Hawes over at Glove Hospital, she's involved with, and I say, is there anything else we can do for them? Nope, there's no funding. I talked to DHS downstairs on the second floor, is there any help that we can help these two children? Nope, there's no funding. Where's the funding? Delago's got it all. Yeah.
They don't get funding.
They got, it's on TV all day long, you get Delago commercials.
Well, they pay for that themselves, we don't fund them.
Then you get funding for, you know, other things, you could put, uh, Homos got the signs put up, you're, Stu, State through A, millions of dollars. It could have been put towards children with special needs, see it all day long. I live on Clark Street down there in Waterloo. I was told by Linda Rapini, that used to work at the VA home right on the corner, Clark and Five and Twenty, that a gentleman come out of that home one day, that walked across the street to the snow cone and got hit, that's the only reason why y'all put stops, y'all put pedestrian signs up. I have a seventeen-year-old son that walked across the street the other day and got hit by a truck, but one did not abandon. Call the state, can you put the sign, crosswalk signs up? Nope, you have to take a picture and send it to us. Took a picture and sent it to them, nothing's ever done.
How long did you have to wait?
About six months, before they even got a hold of me, emailed or called me, telling me they couldn't do anything.
Well, I'll tell you what, uh, I will ask our Human Services Chair and Vice Chair, Supervisor McGreevy and Supervisor Lozaro, that, um, take a look at this situation, see if there's anything we can do to help this gentleman.
I mean, I own it for myself, for any child. I mean, if you've got grandchildren, if you've got grandchildren that have special needs, anyone, not just for myself, anybody, any child that needs the help.
Supervisor Kaiser, do you have a question there?
Yeah, a question, kind of, I suppose, Mr. Shipley. I think the Human Services people need to give us a report of what we do offer, don't offer, if there's a lack of funding, why, where the funding is not being, uh, put forward. I think we need to understand this a little better ourselves.
Grant, we'll, we'll ask them to dig in a little bit and see what they can find out.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, next, we have open privilege of the floor. Is there anybody that would like to address the board tonight? Yes, ma'am, come forward and state your name and where you live, please.
Good evening, I am Linda Zwick, I'm councilwoman for the town of Fayette. Um, I live in the village of Waterloo, but in the town of Fayette. Um, tonight, I'm coming forward for, uh, the issue we have with Yellow Tavern Road and West River Road. Um, these, uh, two roads are parallel roads and main roads who are going through the town of Fayette, and right now, they are closed at the same time to repair bridges. That is definitely an issue in itself, but no notice was ever given prior to the closings to our Highway Department, the Town Hall, our supervisor, or acting member of the Town Board. We found out from a resident who was a firefighter the day of the closing. He said the fire service had just been notified that Yellow Tavern Road was going to close that day. It was also the day that the signs were put up, also no prior notification. Yellow Tavern Road is used heavily for trucks going from ninety-six A to Seneca Stone, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with. Advanced notification would have allowed them to adjust their routes to Seneca Stone. To make matters worse, the detour signs suggest using Allen Road and Post Road, while both of these roads are narrow town roads that cannot support those trucks or additional traffic. Especially on Allen Road, there's a very narrow, very narrow bridge that definitely cannot support any weight of any trucks. Our Highway Department should have been advised and included in this process. Luckily, it only took a day for these trucks to realize the detour was not acceptable, and they, on their own, found the alternate routes. Timing of these closures, Yellow Tavern Road and West River Road were also not well thought out. With only two weeks left of school, Waterloo School District needs to reroute all of their buses. This is an unnecessary burden on them. I cannot think of a good reason why these closures could not have waited. And by the way, on Yellow Tavern Road, it closed last Wednesday, Thursday and Friday there was nobody there working. West River Road was closed, uh, today, and is closed until July ninth, another timing that was not well thought out. With July fourth holiday and our tourists, and we're big on tourists, using this road to access the marina in Seneca Lake, it again creates an unnecessary burden. Both of these roads are used extensively to travel from lake to lake, and to our wineries and breweries who bring in an awful lot of money into Seneca County. If the town had been notified in advance, we could have existed in notifying our residents, and we put it on our website as soon as we were, uh, we realized what was going on. I also feel it was irresponsible on the part of the county to exclude the town of Fayette without advanced knowledge of these closings. Going forward, common courtesy to your towns in the county is critical. In Fayette, we feel our residents come first. I would hope the county will feel the same about working with the towns, and I thank you.
Thank you, Linda, and we'll pass that along to the Highway Department, and, and we'll try and do better in the future.
Actually, it wasn't Roy's department, so, just want to clarify that, he wasn't made aware of it either. It was, um, Public Works, because Roy was the first one that I called, and he had done out.
Correct.
Uh, Sandy, could you explain that, Public Works?
That would be your Public Works Director, Mr. Fram.
Well, this, that Highway Department falls under that umbrella.
Except for Roy wasn't part of the, correct? That's what I was told, Roy, he had, he had a-
We had a meeting one, three weeks ago? Yeah, we had, we had a meeting and we talked about the closures, and I don't think it was, uh, we hadn't got a clear schedule from the contractor, and, uh, I think we have a RE that's, uh, not on top of things, he should have been on top of this as well, and, uh, we were in the dark as well, that, so.
But was this DOT-funded, uh, brickwork?
Yes, it is. It's work that has to be done by November. But we rectified it and we're getting the mornings out earlier, making sure people know what's happening.
No, actually, when Roy closed East Lake Road, which was huge, last summer, D had signed up two weeks prior to closings, and, um, the route, the detoured routes were planned and figured out, and it was a good process and it worked well. Everybody knows, nobody wants to get a detour, but again, I think Linda summed it up, we weren't included, um, it was a short window of time that we knew before the roads closed, and both those roads are pretty major, they're heavily traffic roads, so, there you go.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Heisen?
Who bid out this work? The state bid out the work, or did the county?
Uh, Sam, can you, uh, can you enlighten that?
It's, uh, money we apply for through the state and then we bid it out.
We're responsible for the contractor, not the state.
That is correct.
It's our, it's our problem that we're hired the contractor.
Okay, who does the inspection?
That's, uh, that would be B and L, they have their resident-
Just part of the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, moving on, is there anyone else who would like to address this board? Well, you want to address the board?
Yes. It isn't just the town of Fayette, I don't know all that's in there too, on some roads that weren't posted until the last minute. The school buses didn't know about it until they drove down the road to the brig, and had to turn around. So the school wasn't notified.
Well, sounds like we need to, uh, come up with a better SOP to, uh, avoid this kind of thing. All right, uh, if there's nobody else, uh, I'll move forward with the approval of the meeting minutes.
Subdue.
Which, which meeting is this, ma'am?
I saw it, it was in, um, May eighth and May twenty-second, special meeting. We were sent all of them.
By May eighth and five twenty-second?
Yes.
Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Uh, if not, uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Uh, against? That motion's approved. Uh, reports of standing committees. First, I'll go on Supervisor McGreevy, Health and Human Services. I'm helping tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Human Services Committee met on May twenty-second. In addition to approving the resolutions included on tonight's agenda under Health and Human Services, the committee authorized refilling a position for the Director of Veteran Services Agency, Director O'Conner's will be retiring at the end of this month. We also authorized refilling a position for a full-time psychiatric nurse in the Mental Health Department. On the agenda, item number twenty-six, under Health and Human Services, is a resolution to create a new position for an addictions counselor, when the time is appropriate. I will be seeking an amendment to the resolution to add the funding source information for the new position. Finally, Food Link is providing a curbside market at the HSS Building one day a week during the summer. First date is Monday, June eleventh, at the Office for the Aging, between noon and one-thirty PM, and there are flyers on the agenda table for more information. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, next, Supervisor Davidson, Human Resources and Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's two items that are going to be on the agenda tonight, uh, one is to make an exception to the Mylett University policy, and the other is to, uh, annual resolution leaving the local law requiring for, uh, for Empire Farming. This year, the date's through August seventeenth and nineteenth, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Next, Supervisor Kaiser, Economic Development and Tourism.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Um, at the Economic Development Tourism Committee meeting last month, we met with B and L, and, uh, engineers provided a PowerPoint presentation of the three eighteen corridor sewer improvements district, and prepare, and, uh, posed operation with intermunicipal agreements with Tyre and Seneca Falls in place. The project is set to be online and operating by September of this year. Uh, and also, Bill Yale, uh, Director of Sampson Veterans Memorial Cemetery, met with the committee. Uh, we discussed the idea of providing cremation services to the cemetery, for the cemetery. Uh, statistics show that baby boomers are asking more and more for cremation. Uh, this is still in the idea stage, and funding still needs to be identified or received forward with that idea. Uh, there may be JASNY or VAS NY grant money for, for nine hundred thousand, it's a possibility, and, uh, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dave. Next, Supervisor Heisen, do you have an Indian Affairs report?
Yes, we had a short meeting there, and we discussed a lot of that Senator Helman sent to, of Mr. Mayberry of the BIA regarding our Cuban Indians trust renewal application. We're informed that Mark Lincoln has been appointed the Chief of the Tribal Police, and we discussed the Supreme Court, the way in, uh, Washington State Supreme Court, that then we're sent back to another court, kind of complicated case there, a little bit of a, maybe next meeting, the committee will have, uh, our attorney, Brian, to explain that to his son.
Okay. I think that would be very appropriate. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Next, Supervisor Brunel, Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at the Public Safety Committee meeting in May, we approved a resolution number eighteen on the agenda. We also approved a resolution to submit the application for Homeland Security, Public Safety, and True Point Operations Grant. We're to supervise about the same night for a special board meeting to adopt the resolution because the deadline must June eighth, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ernie. Next, Supervisor Cromwether, Agriculture and Environmental Affairs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're at, uh, May twenty-second. We talked about the fair rubbish removal business going out of, going out of business and bankruptcy, and, uh, dealing with the complaints, and the Seneca County code enforcement, block out the parking lots, prevent people from throwing their garbage there. That's, uh, in the Solvay Bank's hands right now, and, uh-
Can we get an update on that, Sam or, or Don? I believe that the site has been cleaned up and all the garbage has been hauled away, is that correct?
That is what I understand, yeah.
It looks a lot better, I go by, smell better.
The local residents don't mean the smell is gone, so that's, that's very good.
And we talked about the, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts building, the old Dunkin' Donuts building, but we were informed that there's just been bought at the auction, so hopefully we'll see it clean up and some activity there. And there, there's no active activity.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Supervisor Trump, what were your works?
Um, outside of the resolutions that will follow, um, we approved refilling two positions for temporary seasonal mower at the Highway Department. Um, we accepted recommendation from the county manager to contract with Troy and Banks Utility and Telecommunication Consultants to perform a utility billing audit to determine proper billing over a six-year period. There's no expense on the part of the county, they get paid on a percentage of what they find during their audit. Um, the three bears construction bits for the sidewalks and back porch came in at a hundred thousand dollars higher than we expected. Um, the committee has requested new costs based on changes to the original plan, so we asked them to sort that up and come back to us and, uh, dissect the numbers and see what project we wanted to do. And then, uh, there was discussion on Water District Long Spring Meadows. Holy building, you're right.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, next, Supervisor Reynolds, Ways and Means.
Ways and Means Committee is currently reviewing the draft policy for implementing information technology. We plan to review it again in two weeks and send it to the board of supervisors in the July meeting. That's all we have, I don't know.
Very good, thank you, Mike. Next is Chairman's remarks, I have a couple brief comments tonight. Uh, I want to recognize Senator Chuck Schumer for coming to Seneca County on May twenty-fifth to stand alongside local representatives at Ventosa Winery in opposition to the proposed trash incinerator to be located near the Ramelis High School. The more important message to our Albany representatives must be any decision to place a trash burning incinerator in the heart of the Finger Lakes should be a home rule decision made by the local Town Board members who answer directly to the local families affected. This highly profound environment- This highly profound environmental issue should not be allowed to be decided by any politically appointed Albany commission who would not have the best interest of families and the future of the entire Finger Lakes region as a consequence. Also, I wish to appeal directly to all of our honored veterans. As you know and we heard tonight regarding the Sampson Memorial, Veterans Memorial Cemetery, New York State is one of the few states in the United States that does not have an officially designated state veterans cemetery. So Seneca County needs your help. We are asking everyone to help honor the memory of the 530 souls that are buried at Sampson Veterans Memorial Cemetery by calling or writing their local New York State Senator and Assembly member and ask them to pass legislation to designate Sampson Veterans Memorial Cemetery located in Seneca County at the site of the former Naval Training Station and Sampson Air Force Base as New York State's first officially designated state veterans memorial cemetery. And I'd like to see this board consider that in future resolutions and petition our, our state representatives to move forward on this. Thank you for your attention. Uh, County Manager's remarks.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief on a couple uplifting notes. We've had three graduates to attain higher degrees through the DHS training funds. Ms. Tammy Smithers, Sandy Steele both achieved a associate's degree from FLCC and Ms. Amy Carino received her master's degree from UCA College. And congratulations to those ladies.
Absolutely, congratulations. Next County Attorney's remarks.
Nothing from the County Attorney tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you made it easy. Margaret, Communications.
Communications 94 through 117 were received and filed.
Okay, now I get to flip over to resolutions. Uh, let's see, number 14 Supervisor Trout. Supervisors award bid for aggregate and here is support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 15 Supervisor Trout.
Supervisors award bid for striking at county highways. Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 16 Supervisor Trout.
Accepted from Raymond E. Kelly, re-talking and resealing exterior of the Seneca County Office Building.
Order. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 17 Supervisor Trout.
I would encourage everybody not to second this. The relevance of this passed, but hiring senior water and sewer district operator.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, uh, can I have Mr. Trout explain what he means by that?
I was in contact with Sam Prin last week. There was an interview process that needed to take place for a potential candidate for our water and sewer districts. He had mentioned to me that he would like to do the interview on Monday before our board meeting. Uh, during our last committee meeting, it was brought up and the committee had asked if Mr. Bronka, uh, water and sewer operator, could join that discussion with his knowledge of water and sewer and make sure that we were hiring rapers. So they had that meeting yesterday. Uh, Mr. Bronka was present and this resolution is to put him into that meeting, so.
No point then.
Not really, because this board wasn't allowed to vote. So we're setting a precedent here, we're going down a slippery slope because if the committee passed it, if the county manager asked it to go to the full board, they already did the interview yesterday without the full board vote. So if you're going to do it here and make exceptions to our rules that we have, heaven knows how many other times that is going to happen. Because Mr. Bronka, the interview should not have been until after tonight's board vote. Even though I was the one that wanted it, it's the whole point of following the rules of order, which were done.
Okay, any other discussions?
Yes, Mr. Shifley.
Supervisor Kaiser.
The precedent is for appointments at this level is done usually by the department heads.
Yes.
Uh, I think to do otherwise would be diverting from policy. Uh, I think that overrules any idea of any precedence that Mrs. Lorenzetti is pointing out, in my opinion.
Okay, anybody else? Supervisor Cromwether.
I'd just say the intent of the committee was to invite Mr. Bronka and that was what happened, so.
I agree, the intent of the committee, and I specifically said, does it have to go to a full board? And in the minutes, you will see, and I think some of you that were here will remember, it was a kind of a match and actually a kissing match. And it was the county manager that wanted it to go to the full board. So for it not to come to you guys to vote on, that's not right. If you all want to sit back and figure out a way that you think it's right, that's fine, but it's not.
Okay, now you have your chance to vote, all in favor?
Of the resolution?
Yeah. Opposed?
Aye.
Understood. And the opinion of the chair, that motion passed?
So he has a.
Number 18.
There you are, folks, government and plans.
Well, we had to vote.
Supervisor Brunel, number 18.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Supervisor eliminate one full-time planning trainer and create one full-time Deputy Director of Emergency Management Position. Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? This is a position that we've always had. We just haven't filled it in the past couple of years, so. I think, is that correct, Melissa?
That's correct.
Yeah, we're just refilling a position that I believe Melissa served in previously before you were elevated. Uh, being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 19 Supervisor Kaiser.
Board bids authorize additional funding for design and construction of hangar space at Finger Lakes Regional Airport.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Supervisor La.
I had asked the committee to give you some numbers. How much fuel was sold? Did, was that cotton, any chance?
Cotton, Mr. Chairman.
The short answer serves, no it wasn't. Now that you mention it, I forgot.
That's okay, I took my time Friday. Was going far, I took my time anyhow. I went back to the airport, met with one of the county managers. I wanted to know if Melton, but he wasn't available that day. Uh, got some numbers. And the numbers do satisfy me that I will vote for this tonight. But I feel these numbers should be in front of us all the time. They had moved, uh, the first quarter in 2016, for the full year of 2016, they moved 12,353 gallons of regular aviation fuel. That fuel, that same period, moved 23,518 gallons. And I also have a price that they got, I don't know what their cost is of purchase those fuels. For 2017, the numbers are about the same, 12,282 and 21,753. So we are selling fuel. They also gave me a list from 3/31/18 until 5/25/18 of jets that had landed back there and presumably bought fuel. We had a total of 16 jets landed at the airport, which is about 15 and a half more than I thought it was going to be.
Supervisor La, imagine how much that number could have been increased if we could get the runway extended 1,000 feet that we've been discussing for the last couple of years.
You're exactly right. And the people should know that bought it, Scepter, Angie's List, and I believe four jets came in with students that are going to probably go to Hobart William Smith. So we're giving a good broad range of jets. So I am pretty satisfied. There's also a plane sitting out over there that they would normally get $500 a month storage for, was inside of a hangar. Until this hangar gets built, that plane has to sit outside, so we don't get that money. So, just for your information.
Thank you, Ralph, for digging all the facts and figures out. Any other discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. And another thing on the airport that we need to definitely look into is we would have a lot more landings if we could get a rental car company out there because a lot of jets have refused to come in because there is no ability to rent a vehicle to leave the airport. And so that ought to be on, John, you want to address that one?
Yes, sir, currently working at Enterprise Fleet Management. Has a contract that didn't quite meet the group, me and myself, and the county attorney. But I'm in contact with representation of the EFM and it's expected we'll have a car.
Good, is there some liability problems with insurance?
The short of it is, EFM would like our staff to do all administration as well. It's clear for safety reasons, the use of the car. So.
And that's not really practical, is it?
Well, it's practical if it works in pursuit of additional revenue with enhanced sales of fuel. That's where the money is.
Yeah.
Is fuel sales. So if we can get more patrons to come because we have a rental car and our employees, our tasks would just.
Technically, technically, anybody who works for us at the airport is a county employee.
That's correct. So.
Okay. Thank you, John. Uh, next, number 20, uh, and I'm not sure who this is under. Waiver, waive local law requirements for Empire Farm Days.
That would probably be me, it just didn't have my name there, so I wouldn't go saying that.
All right, well, I'll bring it up.
Okay, it says HRGO, that'd be Human Resources and Government Office, I guess that'd be me.
You're keeping us guessing here, Margaret.
I know.
You keep us busy.
We will waive the local law requirement for Empire Farm Days.
Which we have done every year from the last.
Since it's been in Seneca Falls.
There you go.
So it's been in somebody's farm.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed.
I've got 21 as well.
Okay.
Mr. Shifley.
Take right off. Hello.
Uh, did we vote on the airport resolution? We were in discussion, Mr. La.
Yeah, we did, we did before, didn't we?
No. Mr. Shifley.
Yeah, we voted before I came back with the rental car question.
Okay, that threw me off, thank you.
I go now, 21.
Uh, go right ahead Supervisor Davidson.
Hunter on his exception to travel policy. 101, 149 for mallet reimbursement.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
As we've discussed this before.
Supervisor Lazar, you want to explain this?
As we've discussed this before, I think, uh, I think it's okay, I'm going to vote yes. But I, I think we need, we need to keep to the travel policy because it, you know, we know on a quarterly basis where our budget is. I think it's important. But I will vote yes.
Okay Supervisor Davidson.
Okay now, Greg, are you saying this because of the third whereas? Three individuals are requesting exceptions to the policy by authorized payment for their claim totaling uh, $1,243.64 that were not submitted within the time limit set forth in the policy. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
We need to stick, stick with the policy.
I think we need to stick with the policy in the future, but I'm not authorized it. But I think we need to take a strong measure that, that, uh, you know, in the future, you know, you have to stick to the policy and submit these requests on time, period, end of story.
Uh, yes. Okay, thank you. Uh, Margaret has pointed out that in the third whereas, the, the amount of $1,243 is incorrect and it should be the number that's in the resolved, $1,430. So I, I don't think it makes much difference, but we should write Supervisor Lorenzetti, we gotta, we gotta stay on task here. But I, Supervisor Lazar, there is no stick or any hammer is there, other than the fact that all you can do would be to refuse payments? Even though they're legitimate if they're not submitted in a timely manner?
There's a policy procedure and I think it should be followed. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna go along with this one, but.
But don't let it happen again, huh?
I, I, we've talked about, we talked about this once last year also and we asked people to state the policy and procedure. And I worked for the state for, for 34 years and we had, we used to have to submit those on a monthly basis. And, and if you didn't submit those on a monthly basis, they didn't get approved, you didn't get paid for it, period, end of story. So you learn, put a, you, you put a clipboard on your dashboard, every time you go someplace, boom. At the end of the quarter, you submit it, period, end of story. It's an easy process. You're driving through the county, you want to get reimbursed, and you submit it on time, period. I think that should be our future stance.
Well, I think we've beaten that one pretty well. Is there any other discussions on that? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And for all that, it's approved. What did you do, you didn't answer?
Abstained.
You abstained, oh, okay. Well, still in the opinion of the chair, that motion is passed. Number 22 Supervisor McGreevy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Contracted with New York State Department of Health for Public Health Emergency Planning Grants.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion here? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Nobody abstained on that, did they? Okay, uh, number 23 Supervisor McGreevy.
Board approves appointment of Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board Member.
For, motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 24 Supervisor McGreevy.
Number 24 Supervisor's approved Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act contracts and administrative agreements with the Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board for the period July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion here? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Uh, number 25 Supervisor McGreevy.
Reclassified position for Workforce Development Youth Bureau Typist to Employment and Training Assistant.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 26 Supervisor McGreevy.
Number 26 Board approves creation and filling one position for full-time addictions counselor for the Mental Health Department in fiscal year 2018.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
I would like to ensure an amendment to that resolution.
Supervisor McGreevy, offer your amendment.
Being further resolved, the finance department is authorized to make the following budget amendments and I won't read that graph, everyone should have that in front of them.
That's everything in yellow there?
Yes.
Thank you, any discussions?
I'll, I'll second the amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
I have a, I have a second on the
Amendment.
On the amendment, all right? Any, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, the amendment is passed. Now, back to the original resolution as amended. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's passed. Number 27, unfinished business. Okay, I have a subset, A, reclassified position for senior water and sewer district operator to water and sewer maintainer. That's on the table. Uh, does somebody wish to bring that off the table? That's what we need, girl.
You need a motion taken. I make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor to bring this off the table?
Aye.
Opposed. That's passed, okay, it's back on the floor, what's your pleasure? John, you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a brief discussion. Remember, this, uh, this position was debated earlier, as far as the inter-approval process. And there is an applicant, a likely hiring opportunity in the Division of Public Works for a senior water and sewer operator.
Any of all the credentials?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll discuss.
Okay.
Uh, we have two applicants. There is a other applicant, um, that has been interviewed a couple of times. He wasn't called in for another specific interview, um, that I'm aware of, for this position. Yes, in fact, he did want more money than what the position pays. Um, but he has a wealth of knowledge. And he has worked the system under the direction and leadership of Jim Bronka. Um, he's actually run the system on weekends when Mr. Bronka has not been present. So, we have a water district with three supervisors whose people reside in it. And we are not given an opinion. Um, my strong suggestion was that we go for the person with the more experience that can hit the, that will be able to go into this job and start from day one. We're gonna have inexperienced, um, and we have quite a mess that we have in this water district. And if you don't think so, look at number 95, 96, and 97 of communications. Plus, many, many communications by many different people. Um, I just want my Town of Fayette people to know that I tried my best. I think the decision has already been made. Um, for 10 grand more, we should have went with the more senior that could do the job, and we would have all the confidence that it would be done correctly. I don't think that's gonna happen, um, but I wanted to give it one last plug. And there it is, folks. We do have a huge problem with water sewer. Um, I was allowed to go in and I spoke with Supervisor Trout and County Chairman John Shepherd. Um, we had back and forth dialogue that really did not amount to much as far as I'm concerned. Except, I do know there's a whiteboard in the county manager's office with priority list. And I did not see water sewer on top of any of that. Well, actually, it wasn't even on the board, so... That was my last plug, you guys, to the Town of Fayette. I don't think that we're gonna win, and there it is.
Okay, uh, other than an opinion, was there any?
No, it was discussion.
Any motion there, or? Miss, Supervisor Trout.
Everything that was just discussed, or was just said by Ms. Lorenzetti, that's not what this motion's about. This motion's reclassifying position.
Yep.
So, if you wanted to hire the guy that you're talking about, you would vote no on this. Because we don't wanna change the reclassification of the position, we wanna leave it alone because we do have two candidates, and one of them is the guy that you're talking about. And then we have the other one. So, you wanna vote no on this. That's all.
Or, if I know that the guy that you've already got him down.
Well, we don't want to turn into a maintainer, that's all.
What, that's wrong, that's wrong. That was a complicated one. Abstained. Abstained. You know what, I needed to get that out there. And I'm not going to exact the section, because I started out with a problem. We wanna keep it a one to ten.
Did I see Supervisor Kaiser's hand up over there?
Yeah, it's my, yeah, then, but, uh, I did initially support Mrs. Lorenzetti's opinion position on this hire. But after I invest, did some investigation on the particulars of the people and the situation, I shouldn't say not necessarily the people. The salary that we would have to probably hire, the more expensive person would put them probably more at an executive level where perhaps they could not be in the trench. Because maybe our union would have problems with that possibly. Uh, we need somebody not only that's got the ability to administer the district, but we need somebody who can get out there, be in the trench, be out there working with the people, not in the office, not down here at the county building or wherever. So, I think that, uh, the districts are already strapped for cash, as we know. Uh, I think the option that was put on the table, apparently from the committee that met Monday, yesterday, is sufficient for what needs to be done.
Excuse me, I just wanna like...
Wait a minute, I need to hold on to Supervisor Lorenzetti, I haven't recognized you yet.
I know.
Back to Supervisor Kaiser. Okay, so are you recommending that we vote for or against this?
I'm recommending that we vote for this, reclassified position, yes.
He said no, he says yes.
I'm certainly getting confused there.
Mr. Trout.
Supervisor Trout, can you clarify this for us?
Yes. Say no, and then we can hire the person we wanna hire, whether it's Cindy's person or whether it's...
Don't say Cindy's person. I, I, it's the better, it's the more experienced, I mean, that's a fact.
Or it's Dr. Auburn, we need to leave the classification of the position alone, has nothing to do with hiring the person right now.
Correct.
I understand. So, I was more answering the opinion about who, who might be picked. Uh, thank you for the clarification.
Well, that's not part of the resolution, so that's pure hearsay.
That is correct.
So, Supervisor Trout is recommending that we vote this motion down. Is there any other?
And I appreciate Mr. Trout's clarification.
Okay. There.
Vote it down.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Opinion of the chair, the motion is defeated. Okay, now it's off the table. And vote it down. Uh, new business, uh, number 28, somebody wanna request a Rule 29 for, for the next issue?
I'll make that motion.
Now, Mr. Chairman, if I can, this is...
Oh, you certainly can.
Well, I'm gonna have to, because this is an exception. When we speak of Rule 29, we're talking about bypassing committee. Appointment of officers is not required to go through committee, so there's no need for the two-thirds vote. This can be a simple up and down vote on the reappointment.
So, we don't, do not need a Rule 29?
Well, it is Rule 29, but it does not...
But we don't have to, we don't have to enact the Rule 29? Is that what you're advising?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, Supervisor Davidson, you wanna read the resolution for number 28?
I'm very glad to read this resolution. Deputy full appointed election commissioner for a four-year term commencing January 1, 2019.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Congratulations, motion is passed, congratulations. Thank you. Uh, next, who's gonna offer the, uh, the request for a Rule 29 for the Homeland Security Services Grant?
I'll do that, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you're just pulling them here tonight, go ahead. Offer the Rule 29 first, please.
Uh, we'd love to do a Rule 29 for this, uh, acceptance of the 2018 New York State Division of Homeland Security.
Is there a second on the Rule 29?
Aye.
Uh, Supervisor Hakindell, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the Rule 29 passes the majority test. Read the resolution, please.
Accept the 2018 New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services Grant.
Was there support? Or motion made and seconded, any discussion? Bein' no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That's accepted. Okay, next, uh, where are we at here? Another, the next Rule 29, okay, that was, this is all part of that. It's almost confusing.
I know.
Uh, does somebody wanna make a request for a Rule 29 to authorize the application for the New York State Department of Transportation Aviation Capital Grant Program?
So vote.
Supervisor Kaiser, thank you. Is there a second on that? Motion made and seconded for a Rule 29 for the purpose of this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Read the motion, Supervisor Kaiser.
Do I have to read the whole thing, Eric?
Well, until somebody second.
Authorized application for New York State Department of Transportation Aviation Capital Grant Program?
Motion made and seconded, see you or say. Any discussion? Bein' no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That's passed. Uh, do we have any other business to come before this board? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the special order of the day.
So vote.
Thank you Supervisor Kaiser. All in favor of the journey tonight? Opposed? Meaning stands adjourned, thank you.